Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, members of the council, staff, family, and friends. It is my honor to recognize and welcome the newest member of our department, and that is K-9 Bosco. After being out of the K-9 business for a few years, it was a very sad day when we had to do that. And that makes today extra special, the fact that we have gotten back into the K-9 business after having been, I think, one of the first departments in the area ever to have K-9 way back in the day. So this is a great day for our department. K-9 Bosco and handler Andrew Lemkeul represent a tremendous crime fighting tool for our department. And further, in my view, having a K-9 onboard, I believe, makes the members of our community safer and our officers safer because Bosco is now present and a member of our department. I'd also like to recognize the tremendous financial support that was received by our department, by the city, from a number of businesses and individuals who helped make this possible. And so without that community's support, we likely would not be here right now. And so with that, I have a little oath of office that Andy's gonna kinda dog whisper. But I'll have Andy raise his right hand and after I'm finished, you say, "I will."
I'm gonna bark.
I'm sure I can make him speak.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the Office of Police K-9 for the City of Wade Park, Minnesota, according to law and the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God.
I do.
And if Bosco could say a few words, I thought maybe this might be what he would say. My eyes are your eyes to watch and protect you and yours. My ears are your ears to hear and detect evil minds in the dark. My nose is your nose to set... To... Excuse me.
I hope his eyes are better.
Yeah, right. To scent the invader of our domain. And so you may live, my life is also yours. I'd like to recognize Andrew Lemkeul for the excellent work that he's done to get himself to this point and get Bosco trained up and certified for general patrol duties as a PD-1 K-9. And I'd like to have... Turn this over to Andy to give a little bit of background about Bosco, where we got him, how we got him, a little bit about his training, and then do a brief demo. And when we're... Excuse me, done with that, there's cupcakes next door, so stop over. Andy?
Thanks, Chief. This is K-9 Officer Bosco. I'm Officer Andy Lemkeul, as the chief introduced. I've been with the department for approximately four and a half years, coming up on five in January. This is an exciting moment. I'm a little emotional about it, so forgive me for that. But 13 weeks it took to get through training, and it was pretty hard, very demanding training. I'm very proud of this K-9. He's gonna protect me. He's gonna protect my partners. Been through a lot of stuff in the last five years as a police officer, and I've worked very hard to get here. K-9 Officer Bosco came from the Czech Republic. He's two years old now. He's got a lot to learn. I've got a lot to learn. I've had tremendous support to get where I'm at. And with everything that he's done and where he's been, I'm very proud, to say the least. We've already had four requests for our K-9 from our agency in the two weeks that I've been back from training, which is a big deal. We're already being sought after for our K-9. I'm very confident with my K-9, and he's very confident in all the skills that he does. He's a PD-1 certified K-9, so that means that he seeks out criminals as well as seeks out illegal narcotics. And with that, I will do a small, short demonstration. We actually have set aside narcotics here. He'll indicate the location to those narcotics for me, as well as just a couple healing things. So I'm gonna turn it over to the dog here. Bosco, sit. Good boy. Stay. Now. Come. Heel. Down. Good boy. Down. Yes. Good boy. Get my treats out of here. Yes, boy. Sit. Down. Down. Good. Heel. Good. Yes, buddy. Good. Wanna seek some dope? Wanna find some dope? Let's find the dope.
Keep him away from the attorney.
Check. Check. My dog has indicated on the presence of a hidden narcotic. It's methamphetamine. He's trained on methamphetamine, heroin, as well as other drugs, cocaine and MDMA. So with that, I'll actually praise him for getting that. Stay. Yes. Good boy. Good fine, buddy. And I will turn it over to you guys. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate all the donations and the public support, my family's support, and my officer's support. Thank you very much.
Any questions, comments? Anybody? All right, thanks. Congratulations. Yep. All right, you heard it. There's cake next door, so... All right, review and approve council agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Consent agenda items: Item A, approved Jennifer Strack to police officer, pay grade seven, step one. Item B, approved Joshua Graham to police officer, pay grade seven, step one. Item C, approved police officer eligibility list expiring January 31st, 2023. Item D, appoint Riley Elshire to fire department. Item E, authorized hiring process for administrative associate. Item F, approved resolution accepting donations to the city. Item G, approved resolution calling for a public hearing regarding Macosa revenue notes. Item H, approved parking restriction resolution. Item I, approved MINDOT cooperative agreement. Item J, approved agreement between City of Wade Park and City of St. Cloud for 2022 Street Project, Wade Avenue. Item K, approved 2022 Street Project Geo-Technical Services Proposal. Item L, approved 2022 Street Improvements Award. Item M, approved building inspector contract.
Well, I'll pull item K.
I'd like to pull item A and J, K, and L.
A, Mike? And J, K, and L? J?
J, K, and L, yes.
All right, somebody wanna move to approve B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, M?
I'll move that.
Okay. I'm just making sure you got the right letter in between there, but yeah.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Vic.
Vic, and then Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Frank, you were first. Item K, approved 2022 Street Geo-Technical Services Proposal.
That wasn't in our agenda pack. Is that for Wade Avenue?
That didn't come in our packet. No.
It was the same document twice. The hyperlink went to the same document.
Yeah, mine did too.
It's for the entire project.
What's that?
You...
Green is on. Green is on.
It's for the entire project, so it's for the Wade Avenue portion and Second Avenue South, First Avenue South.
So all of ours.
For all of them.
Of our street.
Yep, so it'll be split evenly between us and St. Cloud for the portion that is St. Cloud's.
Okay.
Okay, no...
But we're using them for our other...
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go with Jay, and they're all kinda tied together here with this. I would just like to know when these projects are going to get started and what do we expect to have finished? It seems like we're kinda getting to the end of the year again. Is Second Avenue included on this?
Yep.
I can run through that quick for you. So the contractor is tentatively looking to start August 8th on Wade Avenue and then move to First Avenue South, followed by Second Avenue South. They'll do the alley between Coles and Goodwill at the same time as First Avenue South. Yes, they are to be done by October 15th for the contract, so...
Okay.
All be done this year.
So we don't have enough money in there this year to get the alley by Wendt?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. We're still seven.
Yeah, we're gonna quote it separately. We want a little smaller contractor for that one.
That's gonna get done also.
It's in that sheet that I handed out, Mike, this year.
This...
It's on this...
He just flopped it on the corner, this one.
Yeah.
Look at that one, Mike.
That's just a recap.
I have a quick question. I know that St. Cloud owed us money from doing Wade Avenue. How does that fit in with the costs that you have here?
So you'll see the St. Cloud repayment under the middle column here on Bill's sheet, the $99,500.
Okay.
So they're paying an additional... Basically, they're paying a larger share of the contract price than they would all, based on their improvements. So they're paying for a portion of our improvements.
Well, I was just curious, 'cause our cost is $515 and their cost is $414.
It's just how the road lies. I mean, we have larger turn lanes and sidewalk we're adding on our side.
More asphalt on our side of the road.
Bigger entrances to businesses. Realistically, that's just how the line lies, unfortunately.
Just one thing, and I apologize to one of our citizens not too long ago, because apparently we did not send letters when we rerouted the avenue, the alley between 11th and 12th by the ultimate. We made that L?
Oh.
S-E-H, I know, used to always send letters out. Are we sending letters to all the people that are affected by this?
Yeah, we'll send new letters, yes.
Okay, all right.
We have a pre-con and firm dates from the contractor. We'll send it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
And with CashWise, because we're doing both sides of theirs, we've been in contact with them through the design of how this is gonna work and staged, and they will be monitored weekly with the project rep, Dave, myself, and their management staff, so...
Do we know if we're gonna do Wade Avenue in front of CashWise, which is gonna be the biggest problem? Are we gonna do that half at a time to allow traffic, or are you gonna block the whole thing off?
We're gonna close it and go...
Do it.
Just do it.
Perfect. I think so.
Which CashWise is aware of, so we've worked out logistics for First Avenue access for the trucks.
Yeah, good.
And vice versa, so... Really, all those businesses do have secondary access, so we aren't closing people down. It's going to be a headache and a learning curve, as we well know, but everybody has a secondary access.
Party keeps driving until they find it.
They'll get it.
They'll get there.
Mike, you had A also?
Yeah, A. On A, I believe we should probably add, and I don't know if Dave is aware, add the completion of post-certification to that approval.
Oh.
Oh, of course. She's post-eligible.
Right, but she's not certified through the post board, correct?
Well...
She hasn't taken the test.
Post-eligible, meaning that she can...
She's passed the post exam, so if she completes our background and everything goes well, then she's licensed.
Licensed, all right.
So she's passed the post exam.
Okay.
So she's what's called post-eligible.
Okay.
So she's... Does that make sense?
Kinda.
Kinda. Anything else?
I'm taking your word for it, then.
Well, when somebody's, you know, like active-duty law enforcement like me, my post board, my post license is active. For somebody that's never been in the job and they're just getting started, they do the academic stuff, they take the post licensing exam, pass it, that means they're post-eligible. What it takes then is for an agency to activate the license, and that's what we will do, assuming she passes the background, and our other candidate as well, for that matter, as long as they meet the other conditions that are spelled out.
So the verbiage in the approval is correct, then?
Yes. I would say yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, somebody wanna move to approve A, J, K, L?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Regular agenda. Item A, consider awarding phone system contract.
Anyone wanna speak?
I guess we can, unless Adrian or... Carly wanna do it? We're changing phone systems.
Basically?
Basically, save us about $850 a month with a little bit better product.
Correct. Like was mentioned at the work session, we as staff and department heads... I have it on.
Okay, here.
Sorry. We worked for the last few months looking at different phone carriers as our carrier is expiring in August here, and they actually chose not to renew with us. They didn't put in a quote either. So we looked at Vonage, Zoom, and Arveg, and based off of staff recommendations, Zoom seems to be the one that fits our needs the most. And all three of them, no matter who you went with, was gonna be a cost savings to the city.
All right, council got any questions?
Make a motion. We award the phone system contract to Zoom.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item B, support request to vacate easement, Stearns County. John?
Council members, city staff has been coordinating with Miller Properties Group for a little bit now. They have a potential buyer, developer for a parcel along Colorado 138, a little bit to the north of the Stearns County household housing space facility and just past the service center. What they're looking at is utilizing a portion of that parcel and potentially purchasing a portion off an adjacent parcel. I'm not at liberty to disclose the potential use at this point, but it is something that would be a good fit for the area and that we would like to support. Stearns County has an access and road easement that runs north-south through that property that was being held for some future road options. I did attach the documentation for those easements. Discussion... We've had some discussions with all parties involved, and Stearns County has indicated that they'd be open to considering vacating that easement, but they, as part of that, they requested formal City of Wade Park support. We would be supportive of that request to vacate that easement to further that development in the area. Doesn't totally shortchange future development options. It would be up to the owners and future developers at that time to ensure that their parcels have access and that their plats meet the frontage, but that would be on them to come up with. The county board meets tomorrow morning, so my recommendation would be to approve the resolution as it would forward that development of the parcel at hand. If you were to approve, I would notify Stearns County staff right away, and we'd follow with the with a copy of the resolution as soon as I can, but I believe they just would need a note from me to suffice for their meeting for tomorrow. I'd recommend approval of the... Or excuse me, adoption of the attached resolution.
Council, any questions?
I'll move to approve the resolution asking Stearns County to...
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item C, consider emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium on a sale of hemp-derived THC.
I'll just do a quick introduction. This is some legislation that came out from the spring session, and quite honestly caught a lot of us off guard. We really didn't see it coming, didn't really have a lot of input on anything before it became law. But as of July 1st of this year, it is legal to sell edibles and some beverages that are... Include THC, and there are some restrictions as to how and where it can be sold, but I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney, Paul Storm, to give a little more background. And I think staff is asking for the council to consider a moratorium on this to try to assess better what our options are.
Thank you very much, Chief. What has happened is the Minnesota statutes, section 151.72, had an amendment that happened at the end of the last session. And as part of the amendment, what has happened, the impact of it, is that, as the chief alluded, there is a category of what we'll call cannabinoids. They're edible products, consumable products that have some amount of THC, some trace amounts of THC in them. And when that law was amended and the change was made to make the sale of those items in Minnesota legal, the effective date of July 1, there wasn't corresponding guidance that was really offered to cities about what that actually means, who can buy it, where it can be sold, how much of it an individual can possess. These types of questions weren't answered. There's already cities in Minnesota who have enacted moratoriums. In particular, the city of Stillwater enacted a moratorium to study the issue. The city of Marshall, Minnesota, enacted a moratorium. I believe theirs went into effect last week, or certainly it's very recent. They just published it. As you're familiar, there is an entity, the League of Minnesota Cities, that oftentimes provides guidance to Minnesota cities on how to navigate changes in the law. The League did not have any guidance for cities until this Friday. On Friday, they posted, July 15th, they posted a, you know, set of questions and answers and a little bit of initial guidance, but within that, they also remarked that there are items that they are still working on clarifying. One in particular is that the League of Minnesota Cities has indicated that they are working with the Minnesota Chiefs of Police and also with the sheriff's departments about how to develop a series of best practices or a series of protocols for how you would go about enforcing the law. The parts that we do know are that the sale is limited to people over the age of 21. But what we don't have, for example, is let's say that a retail establishment has 18-year-olds or 17-year-olds behind the counter at a... You know, I'll give you the example of a gas station. And perhaps they have the ability to sell a product, perhaps they don't have the ability to sell the product. That hasn't been clarified yet. One other thing that we understand from the guidance from the League of Cities and from the way that the law was written and past examples of where law changes that are not quite like this one, but close enough that the League was willing to draw analogies, is that cities like Wade Park, St. Cloud, Sartell, all these areas have the capacity to have some local ordinances, some local regulations. As I was sitting there thinking about some of this material and of some of the inevitable emails, telephone conferences, and questions that I'm going to get, I'm imagining, for example, that planning will have questions about zoning. Are we going to allow in Wade Park, for example, production and manufacture of these types of products? And if so, is there parts of the city that are better suited for that than others? Another concern that might come up is whether or not pop-up retail, or call them transient merchants, people who show up and set up in a parking lot somewhere and say, you know, for the next two weeks, we'll be here selling our product. Is that something that Wade Park has a plan for or would want to regulate in a certain way? The reality is that there's other moving parts as well, but they all raise questions that should be given some real attention on how we want to approach them. The one-year moratorium that's been proposed is to allow for the time to study the issue, come to the council with proposals or ideas, and for the council to consider in work sessions on their own time in spirited debate, what is appropriate for Wade Park to ensure that we don't find ourselves with unintended consequences, that we've thought things through a little bit. Certainly, I'd take any questions or comments if the council thinks I haven't covered something.
All right, council, got any questions, comments?
Yeah. Been on the phone for the last three days about this issue with some of our retailers that sell it. Actually, and I've been on the phone with the head lobbyist to the state legislature on this. He is coming up with the suggestions for cities, and if you look in your email today, the email came up from the League of Minnesota with Paul sitting with the questions and answers. The lobbyist I talked to said, "If we go with a moratorium, we're gonna shut down the existing businesses that sell these products because those products are included as part of this new resolution that the state came in." So virtually, we'll be shutting down anybody that would sell a CBD products. The products that are here aren't new products. These products have been sold. They've been distributed in the state of Minnesota from different ways in the medical field. These products are meant to help our mentally ill, people that are having trouble with mental issues, depression, those types of things. And it isn't suggesting you put a moratorium. It's suggested that the city works on getting a proper ordinance for the city, not saying not to disclose it, because these products are regulated through the state statute already. There are some pretty stiff penalties if these are abused and sold improperly. As far as the selling of these products, you've already got people that are 15, 16, 17, 18, under 21, selling these products at our local retail establishments, and we haven't said anything about that. And it hasn't been a problem, from what I underst... I don't know if it has, but I don't think it's been a big problem. So moratorium, I don't think, at this time is what we should do. We should work together to come up with some speedy information and the proper facts on all of this and come up with an ordinance that would fit our city. St. Cloud is not gonna go with the moratorium, from what I understand. They're going to go by licensing and that type of thing. And we can also do that, I think, according to the League of Minnesota. We can come up with a licensing for these products if we feel it'd be necessary for the compliance checks and things like that to help pay for those types of things. So at this time, I don't believe a moratorium is needed. I think we just have to sit down in session, talk about what we wanna do, and like you said, the planning. We're going through our planning right now with the new ordinances for the growth of the hemp is basically what they're talking about, I believe, and where those types of things should be placed. There isn't enough information right at this time to put a moratorium. I don't think it's gonna hurt anybody. It is governed and enforced by a state statute. So that has to be looked at as to how... And I believe the League, if I remember reading in there, is we can't change or add a new ordinance. We can do some changes in the licensing and things like that to help with this ordinance, but otherwise, it's gonna fall under all state statutes, which is a pretty heavy penalty for the misuse of this stuff. So like I said, and it's not products that are new in no means. These products are out there. You can buy them in the state of Minnesota. You can... Well, a lot of people go outside the state because they're a lot stronger and bring them back. So like I said, I think we just need to work together to come up with the proper solution rather than put a moratorium on it so that we don't lose any of our retailers in the area. rather than put a moratorium on it so that we don't, um, uh, lose any of our retailers in the area or in our city, because if you start putting moratoriums on, they're just gonna go to the next city that's gonna allow the sales and the purchasing of this stuff, so, um. I don't know if you have any comeback to that, but, well, that's.
I, well, my first question is, I don't wanna be the only city in the area, so how is this going over in our neighboring six area cities?
Uh, I believe that, uh, that Councilman Lindquist is correct with respect to St. Cloud, that they do not have any, uh, anything on their agenda in the near term. I cannot tell you, I am not certain what act Sartell is taking. I don't know if, uh, if Chief Bentrude, if you've had discussions with any of the police departments?
I have not. I have not had time.
No.
Yeah, I, I would also like to add that this is one of the first topics I've had contact from people when I'm out in the community. Um, you know, what I'm hearing is that, um, they're not favoring either that we put a moratorium on. They're talking about, um, elderly people who are using it for anxiety, uh, for sleep, uh, for pain, and some other issues, um, that are very helpful to them, and I certainly can't support a moratorium at this point either.
This isn't gonna take anything away from them. Th- those people could always get that under, with a prescription. This, this is buying it from, I, my grandson, who's twelve years old, can go into, well, he's supposed to be twenty-one, but he knows a buddy and then he gets it for, and they can buy it.
They're right, they have to go get a prescription.
Oh, you can't, not today.
They have to go get a prescription. The difference is they have to go get a prescription.
They do now, in today's world, yeah. Yeah, in today's world, they have to get a prescription. So they're not taking anything away.
This is available where they didn't have to have, go to see a doctor to get a prescription to help themselves sleep or handle anxiety or other issues, so.
I understand that.
I'm not one who can support a moratorium either.
But unless you put a moratorium on it, how do you, how do you study it?
Study it as.
I was hoping our own legislator would get back together and fix their own mistakes.
Now, this is too big.
That's, I'm done with this. They, they, no bonding bills, they can't get their own homework done, so I'd. My frustration with these is beyond.
They allowed it to go through, um, because it is happening. Like I said, it, it's nothing new.
It is new. It's, it's new that you can buy it without a prescription.
And what's wrong with it?
I'm just telling you, it's new.
And it's very small quantities.
I think the best shot this got is, let's table it till the next meeting.
I don't know what.
I'd like to see the response from other cities.
Okay, you wanna move the table? We can move the table.
Move the table.
Alright, on favor?
Aye.
Alright. I did.
Hold it, there was no second.
I did.
Quick second.
On favor to, to keep it till next meeting?
Aye.
Alright. Opposed?
Oh.
Three to two, it passes to hold it till next meeting. I do believe totally that this is a, well, I'll use my own words, an evil that's gonna come, but I also believe that, I think this is a perfect example of where the six cities should get together, and if they do an ordinance, they should all be mirrored.
No, that meeting, I think, is one I've been asking for.
I have too, so.
I can't even fathom how long.
I look back at the issue where we had all of this, these presentations about, we should, we should not sell cigarettes to anybody under twenty-one years of age, and we need to have our own rules, the statute that says, we're not gonna sell at twenty-one. And we defeated that. We had no interest in doing that. So here we're now back with another issue that has public support, but we're tabling it till next time, and I'm looking forward to a real discussion next time, because I think we're wrong.
I think you're talking about when we're banning smoking in bars, and I was not going to.
No, I'm talking about.
Govern that at this level.
I'm talking about the presentations.
Now, we're off, we're off course now. That's, we, we, we tabled it, so we'll do it next month. And we'll see what, maybe Chief, you'll know what, what cities. I thought Sartell did pass a moratorium on it.
I think they did.
And I thought some other city did too, or was going to.
From my understanding, I believe Sartell did pass it. Shawna did tell me this afternoon that Stock Rapids has chosen not to. Um, St. Joe is still considering it.
St. Cloud is, from what I understand too, from the lobbyist I talked to, he called and talked to Dave, uh, about this, and they are not gonna do a moratorium from what he understands. They just wanna do it through the licensing and the ordinance type thing, so.
But the moratorium, in my mind, gives us a chance to do the licensing. It doesn't have to be a whole year. It can just be, it can be a month.
But at the same time, if you do a moratorium, you're gonna close down people like.
And in the same time, then you're not, but in the same time, you've allowed them to do it, now you take it away from them.
Well, we already tabled that.
Yep, we did. Alright, approve bills.
I have no questions on the bills. I moved to pay the bills.
All second.
Further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I do have a thank you here from St. Cloud Area School District seven forty-two for the donation we made to them, Charitable Gambling, and this is an add-on. We need an acting mayor. What? An acting mayor. Anyone here wanna be acting mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's not, no, nothing to do.
No. It's, it pays good, too.
Half of your salary.
Well, nominate Frank for that.
Twice what I get for it.
Nominate Frank for that.
For second, for Frank?
Yep.
Alright, any other one? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say that we, I don't know where it went on the agenda, but you, uh, we still need to do a public, uh, open.
Well, 'cause it wasn't on here.
That's on the beginning. Oh, it's on mine.
Wasn't on, it wasn't on this printed sheet, that's why.
That's a lot of what we use too, is the printed sheet.
Is there any, is there any public input?
There is two people on Zoom, and, uh, I will un- ask them to unmute and they can.
It's not even on here. Okay, which?
That's what I said. Way up on top, public input, and it's not.
One left.
Better open it up. It was on this one, but it wasn't on this.
I just asked to unmute the first one, or the only one left, and nothing's happening, so.
Arthur, nobody for public input? Anybody out there? Alright, Dave, you got anything? Avery, you got anything?
Um, Shawna? Shawna wanted me to ask you that she, um, she had sent out an email earlier asking your availability towards end of August, beginning of September. If you just wanna email her, touch base with her on those dates, that would be really helpful.
For, for what?
I read my emails.
I think it was in regards to work sessions.
Budget work sessions? Okay, I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
It was, it was in the update.
Oh, it was in the update, that's it.
They're actually looking at the first or second week in September. I talked to her.
Okay, so.
I'll be going the second week of September, or third week, so.
Get back to her, so.
If you don't wanna, if you wanna do budget work session without me, then do it the third week, 'cause I won't be here.
No, first or second.
Yeah. John, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Where am I? Chief L. Shire. Carla, Paul?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience got anything? Alright, then we are adjourned at, do you have anything else, Bill?
No.
I forgot about you. Usually you sit there. We are adjourned at seven oh eight.